One minute warning for council. All right, it is 7:00 PM, so I see that staff and council is present, so this will be a call to order for the regular meeting of council on Monday, May 4th at 7:00 PM. Just a reminder to the public that we will continue to meet via Zoom due to the COVID-19 restrictions. However, the public can join the Zoom call or make a comment or question on our Facebook page at Town of St. Andrews, and we'll be sure that Mr. Knopper, our town clerk, will be sure to ask the question to council at the end of the, at the end of the call. So we'll move right into recording of attendance. I note that all members of council are present except for Marineach. And then we'll get right into the approval of the agenda. It's just important to note for council, before we approve the agenda, that under new business, we'll have a quick discussion about the pass of Quadi Lodge, but I'll call it a friendly amendment if everyone else here is fine, just to give staff some guidance on that issue. So at this point, I'd look for someone to move to approve the agenda.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, a small, I guess, correction to the agenda.
Sure.
I noted in the communications, there's a, this is Lyme Disease Awareness Month, and there's a proclamation, I would move that we add that to the agenda.
Okay, sounds good, so you'd like to actually add the actual motion to, to approve it as Lyme Awareness Month?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good, so what we'll do is we'll skip that over communication, why don't we just do that at the end of all of our motions? Does that make sense?
As long as everybody else agrees, yes.
Yeah, do you want to call that a friendly amendment, or do you want to make it formal?
It doesn't matter to me, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, it, it is advertised that we will be discussing it, so we'll call it a friendly amendment if that's good with you, but that's a good point. So I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Also move.
Okay, we've got, I see Counselor Bishop, and then seconded by Counselor Goomichel. Any more discussion on the actual agenda? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous, seeing none opposed, so that has been carried. We're getting into disclosure of conflict of interest. Anyone have a disclosure of conflict of interest they wish to declare at this point? Seeing none, if at any point during the meeting you do find yourself in one, please just let me know. And Mr. Knopper would be happy to mute your camera and maybe your mic until that one's over. I don't know how it works on Zoom, we haven't come across that one yet. All right, let's get into the approval of the minutes. The first one would be the minutes of the regular meeting of council for April 6, 2020. Looking for someone to move to approve those minutes as circulated?
I assume so.
Counselor Gru, a seconder.
I assume so.
And Counselor Akaji. Any, any discussion, alterations on those? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, those are approved. The next ones are the minutes of the special meeting of council, public hearing of objection for municipal plan MP 20-01, which was April 27, 2020. Looking for someone to move to approve those minutes?
I assume so.
Counselor Bishop, a seconder.
I'll second it.
Counselor Gru, any changes, questions on those ones, guys? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that was unanimous, so those have been approved. The next one is minutes of special meeting of council, public hearing of objections to bylaw Z 20-01, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number Z 18-04 for rezoning of 235 Water Street on April 27, 2020. I have a motion to approve those minutes.
I assume so.
Counselor Akji, and seconded by Counselor Goomichel. Any changes to those ones? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's unanimous, so those are approved as well. The last set of minutes would be the minutes of our committee of council meeting last Monday, April 27, 2020. Someone to move to approve those minutes, please?
I assume so.
Counselor Gru, a seconder.
I assume so.
Counselor Akaji, any changes to those ones, guys? And girls? Those, we'll call the question, and all those in favor of approving those last minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that was unanimous again, so all of the minutes have been approved. Next on the agenda would be presentations. I note that there is none for this evening. In communication, we already determined when we were setting the agenda that we would move that to the end of the motion, so at this particular point, we'll jump into staff reports. We'll look for CAO, Mr. Spear, if you'd like to kick it off, and I believe in addition to giving your CAO report, you attached a financial report. I know we're going to have a deep dive next week, but maybe just give us some high-level results, just for the public to be aware of.
Sure, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like to thank council for this ability to update you, as well as the public, on the ongoing initiatives and operations of the Town of St. Andrews. It has certainly been a unique and challenging time with the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic of 2020. In addition to the immediate actions and costs to essentially shutting down the town, there is now longer-term planning being imposed on us as a community on how to reintegrate under the new normal. Council, in general, the video conferencing of meetings appears to have gone quite well. We are getting more participation from the public while moving forward with the business of the town. One of the biggest challenges council will have this year is reviewing new projections for 2020 and making judgments on what service levels and capital projects will have to be adjusted. We'll be looking at this on May 11th, and staff will provide suggestions for council's consideration. With a municipal election postponed for up to a year, council has agreed to continue with the municipal plan, secondary municipal plan, and the zoning bylaw amendments. Staff are proposing a meeting on May 19th, that's a Tuesday, by the way, to review where we are in the process, as well as discuss a strategy to move forward. Before council tonight are a couple of bylaws with amendments to the penalty section to better align with the provisions of the Local Governance Act. These changes will allow the bylaw enforcement officer to easier to charge those who blatantly ignore laws. With up to an extra year in their mandate, council should look at its priorities to provide focus and give staff direction. While the ongoing uncertainty of the pandemic will keep us all busy, we will get through it and must prepare for growing St. Andrews and meeting the needs and expectations of our citizens. Administrative, as discussed earlier, staff are preparing a projection for council's consideration based on the anticipated cost and loss of revenue based on COVID-19. There are still a lot of unknowns. As we are not sure if our partners are going to open up Sheriff Andrews' house or the St. Andrews blockhouse, how will we encourage social distancing in our public spaces? Are we going to be able to keep our washrooms open? If so, under what restrictions? Or will we need to hire employees to be our disinfection team to be able to keep facilities open? These are all challenges under the current situation that seem to change daily. In a group discussion with the recreation directors from Sussex to St. Stephen, most are leaning on the side of caution and keeping facilities closed. There is an onus on municipalities to put in strict protocols and enforce the regulations as stated in the State of Emergency by the province. In addition, for our own facilities, we are expected to enforce those protocols on the users. This will create tension, extra tension within the community as we follow the lead of our provincial counterparts. Staff are currently working on procedures to implement on a facility-by-facility basis to allow for the gradual opening of all our facilities. Although larger gatherings may be limited, we hope to be able to restore most of our services over the spring and summer. That said, most of that direction is coming from the governments of Canada and New Brunswick and could change our best-laid plans. Over the Easter weekend, a combination of high winds, extra high tides, and a storm surge led to significant damage at a couple of St. Andrews attractions. At the point near the Celtic Cross and the Causeway at Katie's Cove, the public's crew worked diligently to restore the walking path, and by the end of the week had restored most of the shoulder, including the land near the cross, and cleaned up the debris around the point. But this has been the fourth or fifth time since I've been with the town that this has happened. As we discussed in the past, we will need to look at a longer-term solution for retaining all to withstand the pressures of these more powerful storms. The damage along the newly paved walking trail at Katie's Cove was disheartening as the asphalt was undermined and then twisted as the water rushed underneath. We have contacted our engineering firm, CBC Limited, who is coming down to meet with staff, as well as members of sority, to assess the damage and to make recommendations on solutions. I am happy to report the leaf bag pickup program is starting today and will continue until May 19th. However, we will not be selling leaf bags from Town Hall this year in order to reduce interactions between citizens and staff. However, both Joey's Independent and the St. Andrews Hardware carry the extra-large plastic bags that we prefer you to use. We are also opening up the public works yard to twigs and brush drop-off by our citizens. That service is available Monday to Friday, 7:30 to 4:00 PM. Please stay in your car if someone already unloading up the pile. We appreciate the patience of those who like to come to St. Andrews from out of the region to spend the day and support any of our establishments. We look forward to welcoming you back later in the spring or summer. We are working diligently, come up with procedures that will protect you and allow the opening of the town, so you will continue to enjoy your experience. Municipal services, as of today, most of our facilities are closed to the public. Our staff will be keeping an eye on town-owned facilities, and if we see larger gatherings, asking the people to move along. It's likely to become mandatory that if you're at a public facility, such as a grocery store, a post office, or a bank, the wearing of a mask will become mandatory. We encourage the public who haven't found a way to make or purchase a mask to do that right away. One of the recommendations coming from the province is that if you have a walking trail that is less than two meters wide, to encourage one-way traffic and to reduce individuals being in each other's bubbles. We have yet to discuss that with council, but my thought would be that the starting point would be the Van Horn Trail on Water Street, then follow a northwesterly walk along the trail, and instead of doubling back, you return via one of our streets. I understand this is not a popular opinion, and will, will await council's input on it. Some communities have already started this practice. We are also receiving numerous complaints on the use of motorized dirt bikes and ATVs using the trails within town. As a reminder, these trails are for pedestrians and bicyclists only. We have strapped up patrols, or stepped up patrols, and will ask the RCMP to enforce this more stringently, including the seasoning of equipment. We have video monitoring equipment along the trails to aid us in enforcement. Although not officially brought to the table yet, our annual celebration on July 1st will certainly be toned down, if not outright counseled. This follows a wave of postponements across New Brunswick and allows us to keep focus on the safety of our citizens as we get back to our lives. On behalf of staff, I wish to express our appreciation to the community for your understanding at such an unusual time. We are working hard to keep the town opened up following the mandate of the State of Emergencies. Respectfully submitted, Chris Spear, CAO.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate that. If you want to.
Just quickly, financial report. Yeah, certainly, Deputy Mayor. So the financial summary for the first quarter ending March 31st, 2020, is prepared by Emily Nodden, and reviewed by myself, shows that we have an operational surplus of $277,000 compared to a budgeted surplus of $141,000, which is a difference of about $135,000. The biggest change is really just in timing on items that haven't come to fruition yet, and that'll get caught up by June or so. But I will comment, of course, this winter wasn't too bad for the Town of St. Andrews as far as most snowstorms ended up being rainstorms, so over time, it's significantly down for prior years. However, unfortunately, the salt budget is right on target as these little ice storms or rainstorms, we still need to lay ice to protect the public. But overall, our cost year-to-date in the public works is down compared to previous years due to the better weather. And again, in a week's time, we'll be having a public meeting to discuss the effects of COVID-19 and to accept direction from council, avenues they'd like to follow. Thank you, worship. If there's any questions, I can accept them now at the end of the meeting.
Any questions, council? Just a reminder, we will do a deeper budget dive next week, so, but without being said, any questions in regards to any of the staff reports or the financials? Seeing none, so I'll look for someone to move to accept the staff reports as presented.
Also move.
Okay, I see two. I see Counselor Bishop, and seconded by Counselor Gru. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the staff reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous, and accepted. Thank you very much, Mr. Spear. Please pass on our gratitude to the entire staff during what was certainly a challenging month adjusting, so. We'll jump in now to the introduction, consideration, and passing of bylaws and motions. I've got a guest, we'll pass it over to you, Counselor Bishop.
Okay, all right. The first item is FA 200201 dated May 4th, 2020, submitted by myself, and the subject is respectful workplaces policy P 2001. At the March 2nd, 2020, regular meeting of council, a draft citizen code of conduct was brought forward to council for discussion. The purpose of this policy is to provide a means whereby town business is conducted with respect and decorum for anyone attending a meeting, event, use of facility, or interaction with staff or council in public. From the discussion, council tabled the decision to move forward on the code and directed staff to make revisions. Review and revisions were made to the following: the title of the document, and addition of all facilities and property that the town owns. Additional feedback was received from senior staff members to help enhance the policy for all staff and community members. Provided is a revised draft version of the code, which will now be referred to as the respectful workplace policy P 2001. And the motion that council move to accept the Town of St. Andrews respectful workplace policy P 2001.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bishop. Could I have a seconder for that motion? Counselor Gru, thank you very much. Discussion? Seeing none, so we'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, so that has been approved. Thank you, Counselor Bishop.
Okay, the next item. One second here. Got a big pile of papers. Okay, the next one is FA 200405 dated May 4th, 2020, submitted by myself, and the subject is Amendment Number A-6 to Bylaw Number 18-04, a bylaw of the Town of St. Andrews respecting remuneration of members of the Town Council, first reading. And there's quite a long background. In 2019, the Town of St. Andrews Council directed staff to investigate a per-hour stipend for coverage of care services for council members during events and official functions. Staff conducted research into remuneration bylaws for municipalities across Canada. From the review of bylaws, municipalities offer a range of stipend for care coverage for babysitting, but not for additional care coverage. Provided is Amendment A-6 to Bylaw 18-04 with the addition of a babysitting, childminding, or personal oversight care coverage. In order to be eligible for the funding, receipts need to be submitted to the town office before remuneration can be provided. The motion that leave be granted for first reading of Amendment Number A-6 to Bylaw Number 18-04, a bylaw of the Town of St. Andrews respecting remuneration of members of the Town Council.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Could I have a seconder for that motion?
I'll second it.
Counselor Akji, thank you very much. Discussion on this one? Counselor Akji.
Did, did we not stay to a maximum of $75, or am I mistaken with that?
Yeah, no, that's, that's correct. In the bylaw, they've got it $15 per hour to a maximum of 75, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Counselor Gru.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just want to point out that this is not an increase in, in pay or benefits for counselors. What it is, is reimbursement of expenses incurred. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, or I'll call the question?
Deputy Mayor, can I make just a couple of comments?
Absolutely.
Sorry, just really quick. And as Counselor Gru said, this isn't an increase for the, this current council especially, that it was to encourage people that where daycare may have been a problem, that, to running into municipal elections, that we're trying to open up roads for as many people to be able to participate in the process, so bravo to this council to realizing that. And just really quickly, in previous discussions, it had been discussed that this would be offered to staff as well. Just say that it will have to include that in amendment to the personnel policy, where these bylaws are specific to council only. So we're actually updating that now with outside consultants, and we'll add a paraphrase in that to include that, that's to offer, also offer to staff when they're going on council business. Thank you.
Thanks, and judging by council's reaction, we originally talked about that, that's something all council supports as well, obviously, so thanks for bringing that to our attention and the publics. So we'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, so I will read the bylaw for the first time. So it's Amendment Number A-6 to Bylaw Number 18-04, a bylaw of the Town of St. Andrews respecting remuneration of members of Town Council. Being enacted by the Council of the Town of St. Andrews, that bylaw Number 18-04, a bylaw of the Town of St. Andrews respecting remuneration of members of Town Council is hereby amended as follows. Number one, by adding a new paragraph 2.6, $15 per hour to a maximum of $75 per occurrence will be provided for care oversight coverage incurred by a council member while attending a Town of St. Andrews official function. A receipt is required for reimbursement. That is read the first time on May 4th, 2020. All right, moving right along. Thank you again, Counselor Bishop. I think at this point, it's, I believe, Counselor Gru.
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it is. The next item is PS 200305. The subject is Amendment A-4 to Bylaw Number 06-04, a bylaw of the municipality of the Town of St. Andrews respecting noise in the Town of St. Andrews, first reading. Background, as suggested by our municipal lawyer, Amendment Number A-4 to Bylaw 06-04, a bylaw of the municipality of the Town of St. Andrews respecting noise in the Town of St. Andrews, is in relation to replacing Sections 7, offenses and penalty provisions, 8, validity, and 9, commencement. With the new amendment A-4 that incorporates administrative penalties, please see the provided bylaw and amendment A4 for reference to the changes. A public hearing of objection is not necessary for this amendment, as it does not make significant changes to the bylaw. The motion, I move that leave be granted to move to first reading for Amendment Number A-4 to Bylaw 06-04, a bylaw of the municipality of the Town of St. Andrews respecting noise in the Town of St. Andrews.
Okay, I have a seconder for that motion?
I'll second it.
That's seconded by Counselor Bishop. All right, discussion? Seeing none, again, this was just a revision requested by, obviously, the legal team for the town. So without being said, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And that has passed, so I'll read the amendment to yet another bylaw, so there's a few of them. Amendment Number A-4 to Bylaw Number 6-4, a bylaw of the municipality of the Town of St. Andrews respecting noise in the Town of St. Andrews. Being enacted by the Council of the Town of St. Andrews, that bylaw Number 6-4, a bylaw of the Town of St. Andrews respecting noise in the Town of St. Andrews, is hereby amended as follows. Number one, by deleting Sections 7, 8, 9, and replacing it with the following. Under 4, offenses and penalties. Number one, any person who violates or breaches any provision of the bylaw is guilty of an offense. Number two, all contraventions of this bylaw are designated bylaw contraventions that may be dealt with by a notice of penalty pursuant to provisions of the Local Governance Act. Number three, the administration penalty for all contraventions of this bylaw shall be tiered system for the first offense, starting at $150, and multiple offenses up to $500. Number four, a person to whom a penalty notice is delivered may pay the administration fee on or before a charge pertaining to the offense has been laid in provincial court as follows: A, in person at the Town of St. Andrews office at 212 Water Street, St. Andrews, New Brunswick, in cash or by check, credit card, or money order, may be payable to the Town of St. Andrews; or B, by mail, which can go to the Town of St. Andrews, 212 Water Street, St. Andrews, New Brunswick, E5B1B4. Attention, accounting clerk, by check or money order only payable to the Town of St. Andrews; or C, by phone with credit card to the Town of St. Andrews main office at 506-529-5120. Under number five, a person who pays the administration, administrative penalty shall be deemed to have contravened the provision of bylaw in respect of which the payment was made and shall not be charged with an offense in respect of the same incident that gave, gave rise to the administration penalty. And then six would be if the administration penalty is not paid in accordance with Section 7, or the person charged with the offense is liable on summary conviction to a fine of not less than $1,500. Read the first time on May 4th, 2020. All right, thank you for bearing with me on that one, and we'll go back to Counselor Gru.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just scan through the pages here. Okay, the next item is PS 200306. Yet another amendment, this is Amendment A5 to Bylaw 02-14, a bylaw of the municipality of the Town of St. Andrews respecting open air fires, first reading. As suggested by our municipal lawyer, Amendment Number A5 to Bylaw 02-14, a bylaw of the municipality of the Town of St. Andrews respecting open air fires, is in relation to replacing Section 4, which is offenses and penalties. With the new amendment A5 that incorporates administrative penalties, please see the provided bylaw and Amendment A5 for reference to the changes. A public hearing of objection is not necessarily for this amendment, as it does not make significant changes to the bylaw. The motion, I move that leave be granted to move to first reading for Amendment Number A5 to Bylaw 02-14, a bylaw of the municipality of the Town of St. Andrews respecting open air fires.
Thanks again, Counselor Gru. Look for a seconder for that motion?
I'll second it.
Counselor Goomichel got the hand up first that time, so hand it to him. We'll go into any discussion or questions on this one, folks. Seeing none, so we'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
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 And that is unanimous. So I will, the mayor picked a good one to not be here for. So I will read yet another by law. So this is amendment number A five to by law number two dash fourteen. A by law of the municipality of the town of Saint Andrews respecting open fires. Being enacted by the council of the town of Saint Andrews, that by law number oh two fourteen, a by law of the town of Saint Andrews respecting open air fires within the town of Saint Andrews is hereby amended as follows. One, by deleting section four and replacing it with the following. Under four offenses and penalties, any person who violates or breaches any provision of this by law is guilty of an offense. Number two, all contraventions of this by law are designated by law contraventions that may be dealt with by a notice of penalty pursuant to the provisions of the local governance act. Number three, the administration penalty for all contraventions of this by law shall be tiered system for all first offenses starting at one hundred and fifty dollars and multiple offenses up to five hundred dollars. A person to whom a penalty notice is delivered may pay the administration penalty, administrative penalty on or before a charge pertaining to the offense has been laid in provincial court as follows. Same as last time, but just to be, to do them all, A, in person at the town of Saint Andrews office at two twelve Water Street, Saint Andrews, New Brunswick, in cash or by check, credit card, or money order made payable to the town of Saint Andrews. Or B, by mail, which is the town of Saint Andrews, two twelve Water Street, Saint Andrews, New Brunswick, E five B one B four. Attention, accounting clerk, by check or money order only payable to the town of Saint Andrews. Or C, by phone with a credit card to the town of Saint Andrews main office at five oh six, five two nine, five one two zero. Number five, a person who pays the administrative penalty shall be deemed to have contravened the provision of the by law in respect of which the payment was made and shall not be charged with an offense in respect of the same incident that gave rise to the administrative penalty. And number six is if the administrative penalty is not paid in accordance with section four, or that person charged with the offense is liable on summary conviction to a fine of not less than five hundred dollars. Read the first time, May fourth, twenty twenty. All right, so jumping along, I see that there's nothing under my portfolio. So we're at Counsel Goomishel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Reference number R C S two zero zero three zero three, date May fourth, twenty twenty, submitted by myself, Counsel Goomishel. And the subject, amendment to terms of reference for the environmental advisory committee. The background is extensive. It reads, at the March twelfth, twenty twenty, environmental advisory committee meeting, discussion was brought forward regarding the potential amendments to the terms of reference. It was suggested three new ex officio members should be added to the committee. It was suggested that firstly, two students from Sir James Dunn Academy. The purpose of adding these ex officio positions is to ensure that youth have a voice in the growing climate issues and solutions for the town of Saint Andrews. These students are our future property owners and leaders in our community. And secondly, one member from Eastern Charlotte Waterways Incorporated. It is advisable to have a member from this group as ex officio as they provide practical environmental research and background in our area. Additionally, they are a valuable resource to tap into for support and other sources of funding and research. Based on the terms of reference, the committee agreed these amendments through consensus. So the motion reads, the council approved the amendments to the terms of reference for the environmental advisory committee to appoint two students from Sir James Dunn Academy, one member from Eastern Charlotte, and one member from Eastern Charlotte Waterways to participate as ex officio members of the environmental advisory committee.
All right, thank you, Counsel Goomishel. How to get off mute there? I'll look for a second. Counselor Gru, and now discussion on this one. Seeing none. All right, we'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 And that is unanimous. So that has been carried. Please continue, Counsel Gru, or Goomishel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The next motion is reference number R C S two zero zero three zero four, dated May fourth, twenty twenty, submitted by myself. And the subject is trail maintenance agreement with sortie. The background reads, the walking trail system within the town of Saint Andrews was originally built upon the old rail bed, but has been expanded and upgraded by the Kiwanis Club, as well as Saint Andrews Outdoor Recreational and Trails Incorporated, or sortie. The town was approached verbally by a couple members of sortie who were looking for assistance towards the upkeep of the trail system, either with a cash donation or services in kind. Currently, the town's trail budget is only one thousand dollars. Council will need to direct staff on what portions of the trail town crew would be responsible for, as much of the trails on private land and separate agreements would be, would need to be made with each landowner to give us access to the property. So the motion reads, move the council provide a subsidy grant of five thousand dollars to the Saint Andrews Recreation and Trails Incorporated to help with maintenance of the Van Horn Trail System for the twenty twenty season.
Thank you very much, Counsel Goomishel. Look for a second for that motion.
I'll second it.
We'll give that one to Counsel Bishop, and we'll open this one up for any comments or questions. Counsel Gru.
Thank you. There seems to be a bit of a disconnect between the background and the motion. Where the background states that council needs to direct staff on what portions of the trail the town crew would be responsible for, and where the motion is saying that the council, for council to provide a grant to the Saint Andrews Recreation and Trails, which I think sort of is kind of different from what the background is suggesting. So there's a bit of a disconnect there, it appears.
I guess to answer that one, I'll pass it over to staff. They're willing to answer the, I guess you could say, the discrepancy between the background and the motion.
Yes, Your Worship, thank you. It was just at the committee meeting, at the time, you'll remember that staff actually presented an agreement that staff would be providing it in kind. Then at that meeting, council changed it over. They thought it'd be better, at least for this year, to convert it, or to allow sortie to take the cash donation and deal with it for at least this year. And so we just didn't, I was thinking as you're reading it to scratch that last paragraph.
Exactly.
Staff thoughts between last week and this week, and we forgot to amend the background, that's all.
Is that, is that good for you, Counsel Gru?
Absolutely. I just noted that there was a bit of a discrepancy there, just for clarity.
Yep, perfect. Any, any other questions or discussion? Seeing, oh, sorry, go ahead, Counsel. Yeah.
Just, just to bring forward too, and I'm okay with this moving forward as is, but we've moved a lot of the money motions till next week after the budget discussions. So I'm not entirely sure if you want to table this till next week or move forward, but staff is okay with it either way. Just to remind you, that's what's been done the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone wish to tailor? Would you like to go ahead with the motion?
Go ahead.
I'm seeing everyone looks like they want to go ahead with this motion, so I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect, that's unanimous. So that has been approved, Mr. Spear. And in, with a check, we should also put a letter in and thanking them for all they've done with the trails and how upset we were to see the devastation to the section along Katie's Cove. And again, if you look at our contributions to the trails, we've got quite a deal because of sortie, and we appreciate everything they do. So we'll go to the next motion, and it's going to be Counsel Goomishel again. We're making up for a few meetings of the motions for you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate it. The next motion is reference number R C S two zero zero four zero three, dated May fourth, twenty twenty, submitted by myself. And the subject is Sir James Dunn Academy Funding Request for the Prince Arthur School Field. And the background reads, the Prince Arthur School Field at Sir James Dunn Academy has been closed due to a safety concern since last fall. It is in a current state of disrepair and in need of improvements. In a meeting between staff, Counsel Goomishel, and the school district, a plan was put together to get the field reopened by mid to late summer. For the town's contribution, a grant of five thousand dollars will jumpstart this project to complete necessary repairs and address drainage issues. Also required is some brush removal and a commitment to mow and care for the field during the summer of twenty twenty. So the motion reads, a grant of five thousand dollars be made towards the refurbishment of the Prince Arthur School Field beside Sir James Dunn Academy. And I'd make that motion.
Thank you. Look for a second for that motion. I see Counsel Gru's hand up first. So at this point, we'll open up for discussion. Counsel Akagi.
Why are we taking on the lawn mowing when they have custodians that do that or have done that in the past? What is the reasoning for the town taking this on? Because it will be a burden to our staff from now on, or is it just for one year?
Do you like me to?
Yeah, if you could, Counsel Goomishel. I know that this one's been close to you, a project that you've been working on to help the communities. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So through you, Counselor Akagi, the custodians aren't necessarily mandated to mow the field. It's something that they do that's above and beyond, which becomes evident each summer when they go on vacation and the fields aren't done. Although the fields don't belong to the town of Saint Andrews, certainly they're open for our use in the summer. And by mowing it this year, we can hopefully get the grass back to a state where the roots take better and it's not so, remember when it was grubby a couple of years ago, and it hasn't recovered from that? So in meeting with the school district in fairness to them, they came on just in the last couple of years, as we went to a super district, so they weren't, it's not their fault that it's gotten to this point. The fellows who came down from Saint John, and we met with staff, and we met with local contractors. So we kind of have a plan to get it back up and going. The school should have a field, I think. And didn't you go to the Prince Arthur School, Counsel?
I did, and I also went to.
So you know, it's a, it's a key part of, a key part of the town, the Prince Arthur, Prince Arthur Field. And with, by kickstarting it, we can, with this contribution, we can get it open this year.
I know it is is a historic part of our town, but I also think that the mowing, is it a continuation for years? And now we take that off the Anglophone South District School, and are we taking the time that the custodians were out in the fresh air?
Well, I checked with the high school principal, and he said it wouldn't be a problem for us to take on the mowing this year. By taking on the mowing this year, I guess we can get it, like I said, and get the, get the field up to a state where it's where it's playable. It's not currently playable. It hasn't been properly maintained, and by taking it on, we can hand it back to them and get a plan going forward.
And I agree.
Just for council's information, there's a separate motion regarding to the mowing later on, under new business. So this motion is more for the five thousand dollar grant. Not that that's not good conversation. It's just we will have an opportunity to separate those two. So this one's the five thousand grant, the one later and under new business will be the mowing. So is there any, just to keep it on, is there any discussion regards to the grassy, Counsel Gru's in?
Thank you, Deputy, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to say that although this property is not necessarily town property, it's located right in the middle of town. If it is, if it's in a dilapidated state, it is visually apparent to everyone around. And this field serves a pretty important role in our community. And I think this is a wonderful community project, and many thanks to Counsel Goomishel for spearheading this and making all the right links and getting things started.
Thank you, Counsel Gru. And further to Counselor Akagi, just for the discussion later, if, if the town doesn't mow the field, I'm going to end up out there mowing it myself. So so I appreciate passing the motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, so I will call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. So that has been approved. I didn't enter debate like in my role of chair, but I just wanted to say that although, you know, there is conversation over who's responsible for the field, the reality is, is that field does service the whole community. And if you look at where we have for green spaces in this community right now, under the current COVID nineteen situation, I think restoring that field will be a lovely addition in the fall for some young people looking to kick a soccer ball around on their own. So good work to you, Counsel Goomishel. I know you've spent a lot of personal time on this, so thank you for concentrating on that. And as far as this grant request, I remind all council that we did approve a grant for a greenhouse last year as well. So it's not unusual for council to support projects at the high school. So thank you, council, and we'll continue with Counsel Goomishel's many motions.
Thank you. We're on a roll here. Reference number R C S two zero zero four zero five, dated May fourth, twenty twenty, submitted by myself, and the subject is trail camera purchase request. The background reads, the town of Saint Andrews has received multiple complaints regarding all terrain vehicles traveling on non-motorized trails over the last few months. These vehicles have caused damage to the trails and caused issues with those using the trails. Town staff have been patrolling the trails on a more frequent basis, but are having difficulty tracking down the ATV users. In order to further support our patrolling efforts, staff are requesting to purchase trail cameras. The cameras would allow for staff to get photos or video clips of ATV users when we are not patrolling and be able to follow up with these users. And the motion reads, the council approves the purchase of trail cameras for the purposes of additional patrolling for the by law, for the by law officer of trail violations on non-motorized trails in the town of Saint Andrews.
Thank you. Look for a second for this motion.
Also move.
Counselor Bishop, and now discussion or comments. Seeing, oh, Counsel Gru.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I would urge that when we go to get the trail cameras, that we, we select higher end products that have, you know, high resolution imaging, Wi-Fi, so that the images can be transmitted to our by law enforcement officer, so he doesn't have to physically go out there and download them. I have done a little bit of investigation, and trail cameras are running of that nature, are running around six hundred and fifty dollars plus taxes. So it's not a super expensive item. I would recommend we probably approve an amount so that we can get two cameras on a trial basis and see how that works out.
So you're looking forward to amend it to say fifteen hundred dollars with tax, is that correct?
Fifteen hundred dollars would probably do it quite nicely.
Okay, so.
I second that.
Okay, so it's, just so Mr. Spear, Mr. Dopper have that. So it's amendment to include a budgetary item up to fifteen hundred dollars. Is that correct, Mister, or Counsel Gru?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I guess we got a first and a second. First, we'll vote to approve the amendment, and then we'll go back to approve the actual motion. So all those in favor of.
Excuse me.
Yep.
May I just say something?
Absolutely.
Before you go any further, I'd just like to say that I don't think we're really looking to monitor the people who are walking up and down the trail or anything like that. We're looking to monitor these vehicles that aren't supposed to be on the trail in the first place. I want to make that perfectly clear to the citizens out there that why we're doing this. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. It isn't for public safety is the main reason we're doing that. So thank you, Counsel Bishop. Any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, so I'll call the question. All those of approving the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 That is unanimous. So it's been amended. So now we will go and approve the actual motion. Since we approved the amendments, all those in favor of approving the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Did I already get someone first to move, Chris, or should I get, I need someone first to move, don't I?
No, I need them move.
Your worship, you have, you have movers and seconders. So for the original motion, you had Counselors Goomishel and Bishop. And then for the amended, you had Counselors Crew and Akagi. So we're all covered except for.
You're good. Perfect. Just wanted, just wanted to make sure. Wouldn't want to have a bad set of minutes.
Thank you.
Trying to do another amendment.
All right, so once again, let's mix it up and go, Counsel Goomishel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Reference number R C S two zero zero. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Reference number RCS two zero zero four zero two, dated May fourth, twenty twenty, submitted by myself. And the subject is Amendment Number A dash one to Bylaw eighteen dash zero one, to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews' second reading. And the background reads, Amendment Number A dash one to Bylaw eighteen dash zero one is in relation to changes to Section nineteen offenses and penalties. The amendment changes can be found on the Amendment A dash one document provided with this report. The following is a timeline for the development of amendments for Bylaw eighteen dash zero one, a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews. Motion one oh four dash zero three twenty, Amendment Number A dash one to Bylaw eighteen dash zero one, a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews was given first reading. The motion reads, that leave be granted to move to second reading for Amendment Number A dash one to Bylaw eighteen dash zero one to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews.
Thank you, Counsel Gru Michel. Could I have a second here for that motion?
I second.
And that's Counselor Akagi seconding. And now we'll open up for questions or debate.
I have a, just a quick comment, a clerical comment, that Section six refers to Section nineteen, paragraph four. And then when you go to paragraph nineteen four, there is no nineteen four, it should be nineteen, nineteen C three. So just the numbering issue for the next iteration of the bylaw.
That's nine, nineteen C three. All right. So since, just put that, sorry, that's, that's C three?
Yeah, just the numbering doesn't quite line up with the.
Okay, sounds good. I think that'd be a friendly amendment.
Distinction, sorry.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you for that. Anything else on that one? All right, we'll call the question. All those in favor of approving this signify by saying aye.
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 That's unanimous. So I will read it. Amendment to Number A dash one to Bylaw eighteen dash oh one. That's a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews. Being enacted by the council, the town of St. Andrews, a bylaw number eighteen dash oh one, a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews is hereby amended as follows. One, delete Section nineteen in its entirety and substitute it with the following. That's nineteen offenses and penalties. Number one, any person who violates a provision of this bylaw is guilty of an offense. Number two, all contraventions to this bylaw are designated bylaw contraventions that may be dealt with by notice of penalty pursuant to provisions of the Local Governance Act. Number three, the administrative penalty for a contravention of this bylaw shall be tiered system for the first offense, starting at one hundred and fifty dollars, and multiple offenses up to five hundred dollars. Four, a person to whom a penalty notice is delivered may pay the administrative penalty on or before the charge pertaining to offenses has been laid in provincial court as follows. I don't know these by heart by the end of tonight. A, in person at the town of St. Andrews office, two twelve Water Street, St. Andrews, New Brunswick, by cash, money order, bank draft, payable to the town of St. Andrews, or by mail, town of St. Andrews, two twelve Water Street, St. Andrews, New Brunswick, B five, B one, B four, by money order or bank draft payable to town of St. Andrews, or C electronically by credit card on the town of St. Andrews website. And number five, a person who pays the administrative penalty shall be deemed to have contravened a provision of the bylaw in respect to which the payment has been made and shall not be charged for an offense in respect to the same incident that gave rise to the administrative penalty. And number six, if the administrative penalty is not paid in accordance with Section nineteen E three, the person charged with the offense is liable on summary conviction to a fine of not less than five hundred dollars. This was read the first time on the ninth day of March twenty twenty, and now read the second time on May fourth, twenty twenty. Thank you. I think that for now is the end of your motions, Counsel Gru Michel. You've read enough till probably November now. So we'll switch.
I, I made my comment about the clerical numbering. I, I misunderstood something. So I'll withdraw that comment. The numbering seems fine.
Nineteen four, okay. Sounds good. We'll go now to Counselor Harrison.
Thank you. Reference number ED two zero zero two zero one C, and it's amendment to Bylaw Number Z two zero dash zero one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw Number Z one eight dash oh four, for rezoning two three five Water Street, second reading. The background is the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission provided the town of St. Andrews with a report to amend Bylaw Number Z two oh dash oh one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw Number Z one eight dash oh four for rezoning two three five Water Street. The purpose of this rezoning is to build an extension onto the pre-existing building. And at the April twenty seventh, twenty twenty public hearing of objections, the town received no written or verbal objections to rezoning two thirty five Water Street. Excuse me. And the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission has recommended that council may consider applying terms and conditions such as requiring the use of traditional building materials for any exterior cladding as defined in zoning bylaw Z one eight dash oh four. This could be done by way of a resolution or development agreement under Section fifty nine of the Community Planning Act. And there's a timeline of the various motions involved in this. And so the first was motion ninety one, and on, on March twentieth, and it was amendment to Bylaw Number Z twenty dash oh one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaws Z eighteen dash oh four for rezoning. And then the next motion ninety two was obtaining the views of Prac, and that was done, I believe. Motion ninety three was to set the date of the public hearing of objections to rezone this property. And motion one forty was setting a date for public hearing objections, again to rezone this property. I think the first one was canceled due to the, uh, the virus and that kind of threw our schedules into a bit of a tailspin for a month or so. And then we hosted the public hearing of objections on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty. And so it lasses it to the motion. And it's that leave be granted for second reading of amendment to Bylaw Number Z twenty dash oh one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw Number eighteen dash oh four for rezoning two thirty five Water Street, subject to the terms and conditions that any exterior cladding used for the addition be in conformity with the definition of traditional building materials as defined in the town of St. Andrews zoning bylaws Z one eight dash oh four.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that short one, Counsel Harrison. We'll look for a second there on that motion. Counselor Akagi, thank you very much. And now we'll open it up for debate or discussion or questions. Being none. So at this particular time, I will call the question. All those in favor of going to second reading in this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 And that is unanimous. So that has been approved. So I will read yet again, Bylaw Number Z twenty oh one. And that would be a bylaw to amend Bylaw Number Z eighteen dash oh four being zoning bylaw for the town of St. Andrews. Being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follows. Number one, Bylaw Number Z eighteen dash oh four, the zoning bylaw for the town of St. Andrews is amended by changing the zone as shown on the zoning match, on the zoning map attached to said bylaw as Schedule A thereof for the land shown on Schedule One attached here to, informing part hereof from central commercial to mixed use. So that was read the first time on the third day of March twenty twenty. The hearing of objections as we have for the background was the twenty seventh day of April twenty twenty. And now it is officially read the second time on May fourth, twenty twenty. All right. And Paul, I don't think you need to read your part, do you? No, okay. We're, we're good there, folks. So that takes care of that motion. Before we go into new business, I will at this point go back. As we discussed when we were setting the agenda, we did receive communication in regards to declaring this month Lyme disease in the town of St. Andrews. Counselor Gru was nice enough to bring that we should just for formality, make an emotion. So Counsel Gru, would you be comfortable moving for that particular motion? Sure. All right. So Counselor Gru moves that we declare the month of May Lyme Awareness Month in the St. Andrews. Do I have a second here?
Seconded.
Counselor Akagi, any discussion before we read the proclamation? Seeing none, so I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. So I will read again. So the town of St. Andrews Lyme Disease Awareness Month, twenty twenty proclamation. So before we start, we will, I just wanted to, to set this up to obviously, say that obviously we have a, a very high density of deer in the town of St. Andrews. And we also have a high density of Lyme carrying ticks in this part of New Brunswick. So very relevant to our community. And we've seen some efforts in recognizing Lyme disease. So it's, it's very good to see this council want to bring awareness to the town of St. Andrews and to other levels of government over this, this very important issue to our community. So it reads that Lyme disease is one of the fastest growing infections in Canada. In the population of ticks, the prime cause of Lyme disease is growing and expanding in New Brunswick. The tick season is also extended due to climate change, and there is an increased number of New Brunswickers who are suffering from Lyme disease. And Lyme, Lyme disease and Lyme disease, if not diagnosed and treated early, can become a debilitating condition, causing extreme fatigue, cardiac and nervous system disorders, and/or arthritic symptoms. And all New Brunswickers would benefit by being more aware of Lyme disease, how it is contracted, what the symptoms associated with the disease are, and how to get the prompt medical care needed to avoid illness and suffering. I Brad Henderson, Deputy Mayor of the town of St. Andrews, do hereby proclaim that this month of May twenty twenty, he designated Lyme Disease Awareness Month in the town of St. Andrews. So we'll make sure to basically go and put the seal on that one later, Mr. Spear, Mr. Dopper. But thank you very much, council. So that will wrap up those motions. And we're going to go into new business where we have two motions and we'll go back to Counsel Gru Michel.
There is a mute there. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Reference number RCS two zero zero three zero three, May fourth, twenty twenty, submitted by myself. And the subject is mowing Sir James Dunn Academy. The background reads, please refer to the staff reports submitted by Chris Spear, C O. Staff are requesting council authorization to enter into an agreement with the Southwest Anglophone School District for the purposes of maintaining the mowing of Sir James Dunn Academy grounds. And the motion reads, let staff be authorized to enter into an agreement with the Southwest Anglophone School District to mow the field during the months of June to August twenty twenty. And that's moved by myself.
Thank you. Could I have a second here for that motion? We've got Counselor Harrison as a second here. So now we'll open this up for discussion and debate. Counselor Gru.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I do note in the staff report, and I, I would certainly like to hear from the C O, but he indicates that at the very end, he says, if we take on additional responsibilities, we'll be stretching our crews even thinner. Is, is there a concern, Mr. Spear, that this may stretch the town staff a bit too thin?
Certainly, or through you, your worship, certainly the operations manager has concerns. As discussed in the report, we usually bring on seasonal staff, but with the reality of COVID nineteen and the costs that are being retained by the town, we're going to try to operate without those seasonal staff this year. And so we're going to be taking a couple of people off of Public Works that would have been doing kind of that stuff and now happen to have them to the mow crew. And as we'll discuss next week, it looks like we're going to have to have disinfection teams that are going to be looking after bathrooms are going to have to be cleaned hourly basis, or at least disinfected. You know, in any of these play structures, the fields, the tennis courts, just going to have to be given a wipe down two or three times a day and, and on and on it goes. And so certainly we could fit it in our schedule, but it, you're going to be sacrificing something on behalf of the town crew by doing that. So just to be aware of that. Just as a secondary point though, which is for council's consideration, if we're going to restore the Sir James Dunn Academy, we'll have to have a discussion about whether there's room for two fields in the town of St. Andrews. And maybe there is, but is there a need to restore the, the field down by the high school, which is more central, I'll give it that, and maintain the Harry Mallory Sports Field by the subdivision, which is underutilized at best as it is. And the only users in the fall are the high school itself. So that Harry Mallory could probably be shut down at the end of August if used at all, if we're going to restore the field down.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. I see Counsel Akagi's hand.
I, I'd like to thank Counselor Gru Michel for all his work. But that was my concern, that we would overtax the small crew that we will have on hand for the public works. But thank you for answering that, Mr. Spear.
Any other, oh, Counsel Gru Michel?
Thank you for your comments. I think with the Z mower, the Superdoo promowers, it's only, you know, it's an hour. If, if the staff is that busy that they, they can't fit it in. And I, I know they are busy. I see them working all over town and doing lots of great stuff. We certainly want to, wouldn't want to overtax them, but I don't think it's a huge ask to get a little bit of mowing, just because if we're going to do the drainage, and we're going to try to get some top seal, some topsoil and whatnot to get the field up to snuff, mowing it is going to become part of a, part of our responsibility or, or I'll figure out another way to do it if I can't do it through staff. So.
How's that? Thanks. Any other discussion? Seeing none, so I will call the question on this. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And all those opposed? Seeing one, so four to one, that motion has been carried. That will, that will be taking over mowing. I will ask staff just to verify with the school, just because there is union workers there, we just want to make sure that that is okay with them before officially starting. I, I'm sure we'd have to talk to David O'Leary first, but I just want to make, make sure that that's all right. All right. So that moves that one. We'll go to the next motion, Counsel Gru Michel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The last motion then is reference number RCS two zero zero four zero four, dated May fourth, twenty twenty, submitted by myself. And the subject is Sir James Dunn Academy graduation request. And the background reads, the town of St. Andrews has received a request from the Sir James Dunn Academy to put, to put up hanging banners on poles in town for the graduating class of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Due to COVID nineteen, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty graduation class will not be able to have a normal graduation or additional celebratory activities. As an alternative, the school is looking to create graduation banners to line the streets of town. As part of the request, the town of St. Andrews would need to invest in new banner brackets to put on poles in town. These brackets can be used for future events, that is, things like curling events or Remembrance Day, et cetera. So the motion reads, the council approve up to two thousand dollars for the purchase of new banner brackets and help installing banners for the graduating class of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty from the Sir James Dunn Academy through, for this Sir James Dunn Academy, period.
Thank you, Counsel Gru Michel. Could I have a second here for that motion?
I second it.
Counsel Akagi, thank you. And discussion? Seeing none, so I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. And I'd just like to add that we work with S G D A principal and staff, that we put that in a very prominent area. I believe that those are for telephone poles. But let's make sure it's someplace that the school feels like it's, like it's not being tucked away, that it's at an ideal spot. Because I couldn't imagine those kids that are graduating and not being able to celebrate together. So I, I really think that we should make it very front row and center to acknowledge everything they do. And, you know, with, with travelers only being in, in New Brunswick, everybody that visits will completely understand of why we want those up and highly visible. So thank you, council, for that one. Looking forward to seeing the faces around town of all of our graduates, because it's, it's certainly well deserved. All right. So under new business, there was one that I mentioned too earlier, staff was looking for some direction. The past McQuaddie Lodge is looking to do kind of a little thank you thing where maybe it's one of those drive by parades or people wave and say, hold up thank you signs. I have talked to some members of council today earlier and. I have talked to some members of council today earlier, and we kind of felt that it might be something that could be an administration issue for the town. I don't think we need a formal motion or formal counsel to make any rules or policies. But I did want to open the Florida Council in case they felt like council shouldn't be approving that or not. If not, I would say that it's a staff issue. So I guess I'll open it up if anyone thinks council should be dealing with that one. No, seeing none, so we'll pass that. We'll say, Mr. Nauper, Mr. Spear, that that's an administration issue. And no formal request is required by council for that particular topic. All right, so at that point, that does wrap up quite a few motions and quite a bit of reading tonight. So thank you, council, for bearing with us. At this particular time, it would be question period. Mr. Nauper, I'm not sure if we had any questions pertaining to tonight's agenda on Zoom or Facebook, or you want to open to anyone that might be on the line, but I'll pass it over to you at this point.
Thank you, your worship. At this point, I'm going to open it up to who's on Zoom first, and then I will go to any comments that are on social media. So I'm going to unmute Phil here. Phil, you have the floor to counsel if you wish to ask a question.
No questions, thanks.
Thank you. Going to open the floor up to Thomas O'Neill. Thomas, do you have any questions for council? Doesn't sound like there are any questions there. Okay. Vicky Hogarth, do you have any questions? Seeing none. There are only four comments online, your worship, and they're all just positive comments. One was from Jesse Hunt that says, I hear you guys are doing a great job. Keep up the hard work. I know my mom appreciates it, and thanks everyone for the work. Michelle Henkel-Muntz says, we are hoping to come and visit St. Andrews in July if all goes well. And this was pretty much for you, Brad. It's from Gail Erwin, your cousin. They just. Perfect. That is all the questions from the public at this point.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, guys, for the feedback, and thank you for paying attention. I have talked to a number of people that normally I don't talk about town council stuff about. So Zoom is a platform, as people are home, that they really can follow along and find out what's happening on council. So now that we're through question period, we'll go to Counselor and Deputy Mayor's comments. So council, I don't know if we'll go through formally, but does anyone wish to raise their hand and bring any comments forward? I see Counselor Harrison first.
Yeah, just one quick comment. You just kind of hinted at it, that when you look at on Facebook, both CHCO and the towns live streaming, between the two of them, probably a 40 people watching at times, which is a lot more than we ever get in person, which, I mean, we'd have to be doing something really bad to get that many people.
It's got to be controversial.
Yeah, so it's certainly, as we go forward, we start meeting a person again, possibly to get better at live streaming on social media, to draw people in, because there's going to be an election hopefully in the next year. And if there's some people interested to take our spots.
That's a very good comment, Counselor Harrison. There's no reason why we can't have some type of electronic device in front of us at a meeting, so people at home can follow along. And the other thing is if we are actually not able to make a meeting, we can still be engaged that way as well. So yeah, very, very good comments, Counselor Harrison. I appreciate them. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Counselor Grue.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment and maybe a bit of an announcement with regards to the check-ins that are happening around town and the deliveries. The provincial government, as everybody knows, is starting to ease up on restrictions. To date, we have delivered, the town here has delivered, we're approaching 700 bins of groceries, 80 deliveries from the pharmacy. We've delivered that 700 bins amounts to over 2,000 bags of groceries. That's a lot of people that didn't go in the grocery store that we sort of helped out the workers there. We've had 62 volunteers working on this. With the provincial government easing restrictions, deliveries are being, we're starting to wrap things up. The last deliveries will be on the 15th of May. The check-ins are also being suspended. We're going to ease up on those as well, and we're going to cease the check-ins. We've been checking in on 60 vulnerable people. We're going to be ceasing those as of the 15th of May as well. But if anybody has any problems or encounters something unexpected, they can always call Town Hall at 529-5120, and we'll be glad to help them out.
Thank you very much, Counselor Grue. Everyone knows how important that program was and all of those volunteers that have made that possible, including the Quan as in the town for organizing it as well. It's just, not a lot of communities had such a service, so we're very lucky to have that. And when this is, I'm sure you guys have a list of all the volunteers, but when this is all over, we can all gather. I look forward to getting together as a community and celebrating all those volunteers that offered that service. And you know, the fact that it's still in place to May 15th, it's greatly appreciated by a number of people in this community. So thank you for all that you've personally done as well, Counselor Grue, taking the lead on this.
Well, it's the volunteers that are at the center of all this. The other thing we're doing is, we are maintaining the list of the vulnerable people. We are maintaining the organizational structure in place. We do have our list of volunteers. If we encounter a phase two, we're ready to go at a moment's notice.
Okay, let's cross our fingers and hope that that's not required. But you know, it is expected that this is a long marathon and not a sprint. So it's glad to hear that the team's in place if we need them again. So again, thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from council members?
May I say something, please?
Absolutely.
I think we're all aware that maybe we're lightening up on our restrictions and things like that. But I think we still have to be very aware that we don't want to let our guards down either, because they're saying that there's possibility of a second wave of this virus coming in the future. So I think we're going to have to be very aware of and be very careful, almost like a new way of living. So the point I'm trying to make is, don't let your guard down and be very cautious. Make sure you wear your mask. And I think that's going to be a requirement, as it was already said once here tonight. And as a senior, I found being able to go into the grocery store early in the morning when there's very few people in there, I found that really useful. I don't mind getting up at seven o'clock and going to the grocery store. There's hardly anyone in there. It's wonderful. If that kept a few people from getting ill, I'd say more power to, I know you have to have your staff on hand early and things like that. But just little things like that, or big things, can make a difference. I'd also like to, again, reiterate and thank all the people who worked in, currently working in stores and shops and pharmacies, and had to go to work. And a lot of people got to stay home, but the ones that had to go to work, they are heroes, I believe. And thank you to all the staff also, the public work staff, the office staff. I really appreciate it. And I'm going to another subject right now. This is a little odd for me to say this, but here goes. I know that there's some folks in the town, like seniors, who aren't well and things like that. And they aren't able to rake the leaves out of their ditches and things. And I noticed this as I walk around, which I do walk around quite a bit. Is there anything that can be done to help this situation? Because leaves don't come out of the ditch by themselves. They actually have to have somebody rake them out of there. So that's just food for thought. Maybe there is an answer to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Bishop. I'll give town staff an opportunity just to respond to about the leaves in the ditch. So I'll pass it over to CAO, Mr. Spear.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I guess making sure it wasn't on mute. Traditionally, it's always been left up to the citizens to participate in that, because there is so many lines and so many leaves that come through the spring and the fall that come in there, that we probably have to hire an additional staff member to do that. While I appreciate that the seniors in town can't do it in the most vulnerable, there'd have to be a change in policy in how we would address this. Because there's, you know, eight or 900 properties in town that would have to be addressed all the time. And as you know, you can hit them once, twice, three or four times all through the fall, as the leaves fall at different times. And so it's not an easy answer, but council would have to talk and debate whether they want to invest in additional staff to do that or not, or to come up with a policy that only serves certain members of the community who are most vulnerable to reacting to that.
Yeah, may I say something again then?
Absolutely.
I'm not really thinking of doing everybody's ditches. What I'm thinking of is people that just aren't able to do it. So perhaps there's, there might be some people who have spare time, and they would be willing to take on something like that, like a few, maybe a few residences or something. And it's called people helping people, and we've seen great examples of this during this virus. And it's, I guess, basically, it's pretty hard for the water to go down the ditches to get to the gutters if they're all clogged up with leaves. Bottom line. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Absolutely, Counselor Akaji.
Unfortunately, with this COVID virus, NBCC didn't have their Volunteer Day, where they volunteer their students to do work such as that. They did a lot of things for the seniors. And because of this virus, they were unable to do it. So that's one of the things that was alleviated that Counselor Bishop was saving, because they would do those outside springtime activities for one day, and they did a lot of good for the town. So unfortunately, we're missing that due to the COVID virus. And I just want to say, thanks to the staff and Public Works as well, because they do a great job. But we also don't want to overtax them. If it means hiring an extra person, then maybe that's what we have to do. But it is certainly a wonderful idea to do, or perhaps the Quanians might want to volunteer to do just for the people. Thank you.
It's a good point. I guess when it comes to Public Works, let's bring that forward during the budget discussion. I know that myself, I've been working on operational plans, and I know the CAO mentioned a number of things in which they have to sanitize. But like, stuff like benches are supposed to be sanitized every day now. There's a number of different things, public doorknobs, like the list goes on and on, outside of our normal cleaning contracts. So we're really going to have to talk about how we keep this town sanitized this summer and meet the policies and places of all the buildings that the province has, because there is a number of them. And I don't know if it works the way for the town, but I know as a business, I have to have a COVID-19 operational plan, which will put extra staff on at Kingsbury to do cleaning. So I can only assume that we're going to have to consider that for the town of St. Andrews as well. So let's talk about the leaves, and let's talk about extra staffing for Public Works at that time, if I could make that recommendation. Seeing some head nods, so that's a good sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's safe to say that we, as individuals, still have to persevere with our, you know, continuation of keeping COVID-19 out.
Sounds good. Any other questions by council or comments? Counselor Goomishaw.
Just had six quick comments, Deputy Mayor, five thank yous. Just go through them really quickly. Five thank yous and an invitation. So the first is, thank you to staff for all their hard work during this difficult time. Secondly, thank you to Counselor Grue for heading up the successful home delivery program. Thirdly, thanks to council for supporting the work at the SGADA field to try to get it operational. Fourthly, thanks to all the frontline workers who are out there every day, going to war with the virus. Fifthly, thank you to the CAO for his leadership in tackling the damage at the trussel from the major storm last month. And finally, an invitation. At our last meeting, Janice, I'm sorry, Joanne Kearney, had some ideas about how to make the wharf more COVID-friendly. So she suggested putting hand washing stations and things, and I found that intriguing. So if there are other people out in the community who have ideas about how we can make the wharf more inviting and COVID-friendly, please send in your ideas to mayor and council. And that's all the comments from me. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Very efficient in those different comments. I appreciate it.
You got to go quick.
Any other counselor comments? I think, Mr. Spear, there was something you want to add. Is that correct?
Thank you, worship. Just briefly, I hate to tell council, but after a month of not having too many meetings, we are going to be meeting every week for the rest of this month. So next week, May the 11th, we'll be meeting on the budget. And so we're not going to be voting on anything specifically, but we'll be talking, discussing, against doing formal votes of how to move forward. On the 19th, it's going to be full presentation by the Service Commission on how to move forward with the municipal plan process and everything there. For the public, we'll be doing it by Zoom. You're free to participate, but it's not going to be like a meeting of objections or anything like that. It's just to try to establish how council wants to move forward in the process and some of the things that have to be tackled. There'll still be additional meetings for the other plans in order to combine everyone. So for the public, don't worry, you'll still get a chance. But next week's meeting's more or less a strategy session now to move forward with the documentation. Again, that's on Tuesday after a long weekend, so the 19th. And then, believe it or not, we'll be back into a committee meeting in three weeks, the 26th, for the June meeting, coming up on a spat. So for anyone who's interested, just to get tuned in on Monday, Tuesday, Monday, and business of council continues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spear. Really appreciate the update on meetings. And that kind of leads me to a comment that I just wanted to acknowledge all the members of council as well. You know, our four years is up. It's May. And the fact that you guys are continuing to be here for this community and do all this reading and all these meetings, it's greatly appreciated, because if we didn't have quorum, we actually, as a community, lose the power and it switches to rhetoric. So the fact that we're still able to have local representation because of all of your dedication is greatly appreciated, because it is May. It's the end of our time, and you're in overtime now, and it's greatly appreciated for all your dedication. And then my only other one before we wrap this up is just a happy belated birthday to Vicky Hogarth. I know she's on. She celebrated a birthday, a little different with the COVID-19, but appreciate everything that her and Patrick do, helping us get the word of council out there. At this point, I don't think we have to go to closed session for anything, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Amen.
Deputy Mayor, may I say one thing before we leave?
Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the people who work in senior citizens' homes and hospitals. They have, in New Brunswick, we haven't had such a hard time as we could have had. But in other nearby provinces, we're having quite a difficult time. So I'd just like to thank those individuals who have to go to work every day and put themselves in harm's way. That's all I'm going to say about that. We really appreciate those people.
Thank you, Council Bishop. But this is safe to do, so I look forward to the whole community getting together and celebrating the volunteers and the essential workers. So we, well, certainly, there will be a time when we can acknowledge this as a community, and we're going to be sure to do that. But good job on council of recognizing all these people that are making our community run right now. So I did have a motion to adjourn from Counselor Akaji. Could I please have a second or?
Also moved.
Counselor Goomishaw had his hand up first that time. We'll give it to Counselor Goomishaw. So with that being said, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in.
Thank you.
Okay.